Ready to play on Saturday.
Who?
The guy they got.
That was a solid win.
We're good to go?
Okay.
I'm just upset.
Gonna go ahead and call the Dresden regular meeting to order at 7:03. We're gonna first start out with a public hearing. Friends of Hanover Norwich School donation. Does someone want to speak to that? So.
You can speak to my half.
If you mind.
Okay. The most recent round of Friends of Hanover Norwich School grants. RMS for two grants, one for flexible seating for our sixth grade English class. Jen Haynes has moved to sixth grade this year, and as she put it, she noticed that sixth graders are more mobile than eighth graders. And perhaps need some help channeling that mobility as they're sitting in class. So the students did a fair amount of research and picked out a number of different things that they would like in the classroom to sort of help them in their focus and also be able to sit and read. So we have a number of different seating options that are coming for Jen. Emma Haddon is our eighth grade English teacher who has been going back and forth between seventh and eighth grade and bouncing around and not always, has not always been full time. So she's trying to build a classroom library so that students are able, she's able to put a book in a student's hand when they need it. We've noticed, especially in the eighth grade, we've moved away from double English. So the time to go to the library, find a book, and come back eats up a fair amount of time in terms of instructional time. So Friends of Hanover Norwich Schools granted us a great deal of money to improve or to move forward.
Thank you.
Hold on. I want to share some computer stuff in.
Sorry, Tim. So I just noticed that the physical ergonomics in the classroom piece for the sixth grade students, it was partially funded, so you requested thirteen hundred, roughly thirteen hundred dollars, and seven hundred is being granted. Do you, is the thirteen hundred dollars the full amount for that?
Yeah.
And would that be funded through?
That was a full amount, and we're looking for ways that we'd be able to fund that through, we've sort of been holding off on a lot of our material purchases because of the addition of the plus one classes this year, to sort of wait and see what everybody wants, because we have a number of classes they're running for the first time. I think we should be able to find that come for the end of the year. And I would imagine what we would go for is, some of the pieces are bigger, sort of, they look like a cross between a gaming chair and a beanbag chair. So the students would be more comfortable in their silent reading. That's probably what we'll go with first. I mean, if we really need the discs which the students sit on, which engages their core, et cetera, we have some. Nat Shellness used a grant two years ago to get for his five with four students. So I think we can probably cobble together some of that. Let's deal some for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Computer science classes are growing, so Jason Pershorne has asked for flexible cords. So basically, there are cords running all over the room, and extension cords everywhere, and the hazard is high. So he figured out some sort of system where the cords will drop from the ceiling, and there's stations in the middle so you can hook up. And so he requested money for that, and that's got funded. And the other is, we just approved a CAD and prototyping class in our program of studies, and it's the startup cost for that class.
Which class is that?
CAD and prototyping.
Oh, that's the class, okay.
Yeah, so we have DIY, there's metals, woods and metals, and there's another DIY class that's escaping me the name of it right now. And that department has been growing. And you know, when a lot of kids went to Hartford, and then the depart, that department kind of fell apart a little bit in terms of, we used to do auto shop and things down in our basement, I keep going, this goes in the basement. And then it's come back in terms of this DIY, these DIY classes, and they're gateways to Dharma, CAPS, all these upper level engineering courses. But you have to learn how to use all the tools in these classes.
Jen?
I spent the better part of an afternoon down there with Mr. Levine and his students, looking at what they were doing and looking at the facility. And I'd been in the CPP meeting that approved this course, and it's really super. I would love to have students come and spend five minutes at the beginning of the Dresden meeting, just sharing some of the projects they work on, because it's really, really fascinating.
Maybe we can have that in the spring. Maybe we can have some of the students come in and talk in the spring. Any others? Neil?
Do you know, so the grant amount, do you know what aspect of the course this covers?
My eye has not been very carefully on this ball.
Just asking the question maybe a little bit differently. I'm curious to whether or not in the future, that money would need to be wrapped into a budgetary amount, because it's a recurring cost, or if it's like a one-time setup sort of thing?
I'll look back through my email and try to remember what this exactly was in terms of startup cost, but I can't, I'm not recalling.
Can I ask a different question? So would we be able to offer the course without the grant?
Yes, we would figure out a way to do it. Maybe approve it.
The course was approved prior to the grant being received.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. So at this point, if no one has any other comments, if we can have a motion to approve?
Move to approve with sincere gratitude the donation from the Friends of Hanover Norwich Schools as presented.
Lisa, it's seconds. All in favor, raise your hands. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Any nans? Thank you, Norwich and Hanover, Friends of Hanover and Norwich Schools. Moving on to the Burn Foundation. So this is March Intensive.
Yeah, so the yearly donation from the Burn Foundation to help with scholarships for March Intensive. So Dorothy, once again, has been super generous.
Any questions or comments?
What happens if we don't use that money? Does it go into funds?
It's, it pulls over from year to year in that, so there's more money in that fund right now from previous years.
Thank you. Knowing that she's planning to shut down that foundation soon, are there ideas for future years of where this fifteen thousand dollars might come from?
We have other banners we've donated.
Okay.
And so we would go back to them and keep expanding that group.
Okay. Thank you.
There it is. It's the secret ice cream in 2023 message.
Yeah.
She delivered to you.
Oh, did you see, oh, it was full of coffee there. Oh. I forgot that that was in the. It's really good ice cream at the Mini Co-op down by the boat house.
Any other comments or questions? Do we have a motion? Yeah?
Move to approve with sincere gratitude the donation from the Burn Foundation in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for March Intensive scholarships as presented.
Ten seconds. All in favor, raise your hands. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Any nans?
She said only if you get ice cream.
So we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and move into our regular Dresden meeting. So agenda review, does anyone have any additions, subtractions, or changes to the agenda for tonight? Seeing nothing, moving on. Public comments. The chair will give members of the public three minutes each to comment on items not in the agenda. The board respectfully asks members of the public to state their names and address before commenting on agenda topics. Anyone at home? No one here in the audience? So moving on from public comments to the reports.
Vidushi is on.
Thank you, Vidushi. Anyone have any comments or questions for, yeah?
I would just like the board to know that on Election Day, Vidushi and her mom spent the better part of the evening welcoming voters into the school and directing them to the appropriate place in the gym for either registering or voting. And I think that is a wonderful testimony to Vidushi's community engagement. And so I wanted to thank you, Vidushi.
Any other comments or questions for Vidushi?
Sure.
Kim?
So Vidushi, thank you very much for your update. When you're looking forward to next year, right? You said talking about the schedule, specifically what about the schedule would be under discussion or the question? Or are you saying that the schedule, like the agenda for council, or specifically kind of like the school calendar agenda?
So we have a schedule right now that has blocks and periods, so double periods and, right? And the, an issue with it, that we're finding with it, is that certain students, and you may have heard this as board members, are bounced out of classes. For instance, if they have world language class and a band class, they can't take both, right? Because it doesn't fit in the schedule. And so we are crossing that bridge. If it seems like a great compromise to do this schedule where people best practice, feel like every day, world languages, they can meet, and other people like science classes who want labs could do it. So we came up with this genius idea that is causing too many conflicts. There's always conflicts because of singletons and doubletons, but the crashing of the two makes it even worse. So we either have to do periods, we have to do blocks, someone created another schedule that has long periods twice a week and short periods three times a week. We've been talking about as a staff, I'm gonna bring it to students tomorrow, and also ask them to the question of, you know, we have a lot of singletons and doubletons. We've been talking about it in the budget process, do we value this? If we value it, we can choose one or the other, or we could have tenth grade English, eleventh grade English, twelfth grade English, and maybe keep this double schedule together. So we're crossing that bridge. We have to make the decision before we leave for the holiday break, because the building of next year's schedule starts as soon as we get back in January, even though it seems like a long time. But getting ready to build it, have students sign up, run it, and break all the conflict starts in January. So, so we're gonna talk about council tomorrow and see how students feel, so we can add that to the, and how council feels, and add that to the staff conversation.
Thank you. Tony?
There are singletons and doubletons.
So for instance, we have French IV and we have French IVH, right? And there's one class of French IV and one class of French IVH. So there's, it's a doubleton, we have two, we have singleton. Then if you put IV and IVH together, this teacher differentiated within the class, so some honors, and kids got honors, then that would turn into a doubleton, because you'd have two times in the day that they could sign up for French IV. Right now, there's one time in the day they can sign up for French IV. Same with, you know, upper level electives, there's only one of that class. If it runs seventh period the same time as French IV, the student can't take both of those. So those cause a problem, just because there's not many times in the day versus Civitas and Civilization, which the ninth graders are in, there are twelve sections they can choose from throughout the whole day.
Any other comments or questions?
As you guys are discussing this, is there any talk of getting rid of lunch, or is that something that's gonna stay?
I think that was a charge along, I mean, for many years it was a charge then with the schedule committee, that was a for sure, you have to figure out a way to create lunch. So I don't think we're gonna get rid of lunch.
Great. Thank you.
And I think by state law now, is that required?
Yeah. Yeah. Can't go back.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Moving on to Tim.
Okay, so the sad news comes first. The faculty succumbed to the eighth grade on Tuesday before Thanksgiving, and we lost the Turkey Bowl for the first time. Untold years. We were severely, we actually, we drafted three players from the high school, made them faculty members for the day, and they kept us close, but we couldn't, we couldn't succeed. So we're already recruiting for next year, so if you know anybody, let us know. Like I said, we had some difficulty because our Dartmouth football player who volunteered in the school last year went on to other things and didn't replace himself. Still now. In other news, we had sort of tried to, this is a time for vignettes, and I had hoped to bring students here, but the timing of the meeting and the break just did not work out so well. So I tried to give a pretty, just a quick update as to what school was like in the week and a half before break. We had some pretty, very Richmond school things going on. Lots of projects happening, lots of things being dropped off the balconies, lots of things being juggled and spun and rode upon in the lobby. We did have our first unicycle accident before break, so we have a student now who has a brace on his wrist because he fell off his unicycle. Not on campus, thankfully. So we didn't have to worry about that. We have a benefit dinner for the Haven that students had organized that was gonna be before break. It's now gonna be on Thursday night this week, so if anyone wants to come by the Richmond School, eat some macaroni and cheese and salad, and make some donations to the Haven. If they raise a certain amount of money on that Thursday, then Miss LaCrosse and I will share half and half, wearing the newly purchased turkey soup that we have, which is good because the one we had last year was from the elementary school and had been bought for someone significantly smaller than either Miss LaCrosse or myself. So it was an interesting thing. We also had, took a moment to celebrate Oliver Collins, who I think has been in the paper recently, is the newly crowned Vermont State Open Chess champion, the youngest to ever win it by a significant margin. We didn't know that seeing him play chess in the library every day and then go to the Howe Library once a week was gonna pay off, which worked out really well. And then we had our talent show the Friday before the last two days before Thanksgiving, sort of a typical wonderful middle school show of much talent and widely diverse, again, heavy metal, vivaldi. But our two students who have recently come from the Ukraine played, I did not know they could do this, but they had a duet on their accordion, so they looked fantastic. They're trying to bring the accordion back. We did a quick student survey on what homework was. We've been trying to cut back on homework. We wanted to know if the students' experience of homework was the same as the teachers' experience of homework. And I just had to pass along the one thing that one of our students wrote. Someone said it's copied and pasted. I couldn't find it specifically like this, I'm sure parts of it are, but even if it's copied and pasted, it's rather artfully done, so I wanted to pass that along. And the only other thing is that we are gonna put out a survey about our plus classes as we get to the end of the first semester. But anecdotally, what we have noticed because of the new structure in the seventh and eighth grade is that, and it may have something to do with COVID as well, I'm sure it does, but the number of acute emotional or anxiety issues that we've had this year is way down from the last two years. And we would like to think it's because we do have everybody organized as a team, all of the teachers share all of the students in common, it's much easier to make connections. They have the plus class during the day, which is an academically based class, but it's not, it's taken away all of the grade pressure from it. So we've tried to reintroduce the idea of learning for learning sake. So we have students writing blogs that are thousands of words long on things that are interested in them, checking the stock market. Like I said, that's the only problem we have with cell phones, is they're all checking their stocks to see how they're doing, having spirited discussions about if they should buy and sell. So thank you for supporting that. We're gonna do some more research into it, but anecdotally, it seems to have really made a change. The feeling of the building is much calmer than it has been. Sort of the underlying pressure seems to have disappeared. The underlying pressure has dissipated, the energy is back with a vengeance, especially for these three weeks, I think. Especially if we can't go outside. I was talking to a student yesterday, or today, who had a little problem in the gym at lunch, so he's not going back to lunch in the gym. And I said, well, what are you gonna do if it rains tomorrow and you can't go outside? He goes, yeah, that's gonna be difficult. So we made an agreement, he's gonna come see me, and then we'll figure out something. But yeah, so far, we'll get student vignettes here in the spring. Our problem is gonna be limiting it. We have so many students who are so interested in doing so many things, I don't know how we're, how much time we're gonna have to give them to do that. That's what we have so far.
Thank you, Tim. Any comments or questions for Tim?
Sorry, just one request, and I know it's really hard to schedule things without running into conflicts with other things, but it appears that a lot of times when things get moved around, it conflicts with school board meetings. So the choral concert now conflicts with a December thirteenth meeting. So just.
Well, it was supposed to be tonight.
Yes, exactly.
Whenever, I'm gonna miss one.
Yes. So it just, I know that it's hard not to conflict, that some of us would love to attend, and it's hard to be two places at once.
Right. So the big issue that we ran into there is that for the choral concert especially, we need to accompany us.
Yes.
And his schedule is.
Well, know that we're disappointed there.
So if the school board wanted you all to have kids, they would issue you kids.
Good point.
Right?
Yeah, it's a good point.
Or I jokingly move to end all school board meetings.
Or, or hold the school board meeting at the choral concert.
Lisa, if Tom can finish it in an hour, we can get to the choral concert.
There we go.
So just.
Perfect.
Thank you, Tim.
You're welcome. And I had that, I had that, I think I still had the original meeting, didn't I?
Yeah, we were joking that we moved our meeting first, na 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 na, so.
Julie?
So lots of things are happening at the high school. Are happening at the high school. In terms of athletics and theater, music, it's been a really exciting couple of weeks, finishing off all of those things. And now there's a new sports season and new theater play that they're working towards, so that's been good. The thing that I wanted to highlight that I'm pretty excited about, I mean, there can be anything on any given day, but in this case, the part about world languages, they got creative a couple of years ago, so we've been, I know we've been talking about French, but in Latin and German, they came up with three levels instead of five, sandwiched two and three together and four and five together. And then in Latin specifically, in order to, you know, make it seem useful and exciting to the kids, they were writing their own textbook to fit this, the way they're doing it, and they're really excited about it and having fun doing it, and I'm pretty proud of them for doing it. So at some point, maybe Brian Blenny will come and talk about that, but that's been wonderful. And pretty much just a lot going on. Any questions for me? I mean, you've seen some of the Friday Weekly, so you know that there's a lot going on, but yeah.
Well, this is, this is not a question, but I just, I want to take the time to commend the cross-country team.
Yes.
For not only winning the state championship and not only winning the meet of champions, but earning maybe a quarter of an inch of coverage in the Valley News. And this is not a spectator sport unless you count parents and family. And so it's not like soccer, and it's not like football, and it's not like basketball. And I think those kids, in particular, the girls' team, and I won't single out Tori for parenting the second fastest rider, runner on the team in the ninth grade, but I think that they really deserve to have attention given to them for that really significant accomplishment. So if you would pass that on to them and their coach.
Yeah.
I think that would be great. And is his hair still pink?
His hair is still pink. The coach said if he baked pink for Tim, he would color his hair, and they did, and his hair is pink.
Yeah.
Think he's gonna shave it off soon. And then the vignette, just so you know, couldn't come tonight, but there are two boys who are culinary students at Hartford, and I thought it'd be interesting for them to talk to you. So I'm hoping I can slide them in, because it will only be two or three minutes at any principal's report that I can get them to. They wanna bring food.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Thank you, Julie.
I'm gonna just add a quick vignette, because we were talking about before with the CAD program. We had a guest speaker who happens to be one of the daughters of one of our seventh grade, seventh grade science teachers came and gave a guest presentation yesterday, and she works as a bioengineer in Boston. And her job is she uses the CAD program and a 3D printer to create models of brain aneurysms, which then surgeons can use to practice on before that, because you only get one shot at it, right? To see if it works better. So it was pretty cool to see all of our seventh grade students see what all of these different things can then actually do, and see that you can have a job doing something like this, so it's not just, there are all kinds of things. Mike Lapine and I were watching, being like, this is a little different than the science that we grew up in, in seventh grade. So again, I think I would echo what Julie said about these programs, any of those CAD programs, the kids just love the designing part of it, amazing, and that's where it's all going in terms of.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to business requiring discussion, budget update. Kim and Jamie? Hi, Jamie.
Sure. So I mean, I think there isn't gonna be frankly much of an update right now, because I think you will see a large agenda item next month. But I think what we can say is as far as an update, right? So the budget committee for the first, so we joined the Dresden Budget Committee with the Hanover Budget Committee, because this was the first time we were looking at tax rates, at least on the Hanovers side, because there's just different processes in Vermont and Hampshire. And we also had the first time to get the Hanover Finance Committee input. And I think, you know, I think we can have a discussion on what the budget looks like then, right? At the next meeting. But I will say that the feedback that we've received from the Finance Committee, you know, ranges, like all, like we do across the board, right? We all have different opinions. I think broadly speaking, there was an understanding that we are in inflationary times, that it makes sense, we're not in this standard status quo, maybe two or three percent increase is what we would typically have seen, right? This is, costs are increasing for everyone. And kind of just a general understanding of that, I think there were some questions around, you know, need for new additional projects or FTEs and that kind of a thing, which is pretty typical. But that's kind of just the general flair of that. I think what would be most helpful for us as a board, and actually, this is something that I don't know if we fully gave, or at least this is now my opinion, so I must, gave crystal clear advice to. crystal clear advice to, you know, middle school and the high school administration on kind of specifically what to present. So I think the budget committee said, present what you presented at the November 21st meeting, but then also give the board options to potentially reduce if need be. And I think the question that was given to us, to the board, the budget committee, to basically the board members on the committee, was what kind of specific guidance could you give? And I was just thinking since then, what kind of more specific guidance? And I think maybe if we can kind of get like a head nod across the board, if it makes sense to give a little bit more specific guidance, and my proposal would be, you know, we had given, we as a board, right, had approved board guidelines at a three percent expenditure increase. And I think you will hear in next month's meeting, it's not going to be a surprise, that perhaps may not be quite realistic, however, it might be helpful to see what some, we'll probably see a budget that is slightly higher than that, but maybe an additional slide that says what each of our schools would reduce in priority order to kind of get us back down to that three percent if we wanted to have that kind of discussion. It's more of a discussion of what would a three percent budget potentially look like? And I know the high school has created one already, so I'm just, if we can all say yes, like each of the schools plus, you know, SAU district wide, and frankly, we might not think, you know, look at it and say, well, that's not possible to cut, you know, our health benefits, you know? It might be where we get down to, but at least it's on paper on a slide so we can say this is maybe why that three percent initial target may need to be, you know, reconsidered. But at least it gives us an answer for why we can or can't get back to the three percent. So if that sounds, so it's a little bit of, if that's more crystal clear direction, you know, and if that's okay with folks, just as far as what to expect for what the board will see at the next meeting. Yeah, I can give more details, but I don't want to steal the thunder of the formal presentation.
Any comments or questions for Kim? Thank you. Moving on to-
So is that, did I get a head nod? Like as far as kind of direction for the board to send to kind of, as far as what to present? So they're obviously going to present what the proposal is, what is moving with staffing, enrollment, that kind of a thing, but then kind of, it'll likely come a little higher than what the initial target was, but just be able to explain perhaps why, or it gives, if the board thinks that we need to reduce in any way, like what areas would be kind of the first to go?
Count of three head nods so far.
Okay.
Garrett?
Thanks, Jake.
I was just going to say for the next meeting, it, right, like you'll see, it's pretty, it's pretty simple numbers, but it's basically salary and benefits are up about five percent, and as we all know, that's most of the budget. So I think the administrators were saying, you do want us to get down to three percent, it's either going to be-
A cutting bone.
Something pretty major that's going to impact our system, or it's going to be a million little cuts that's going to be like, so that's the decision ahead of everybody, I think, which is why the proposal was, is hey, show us what would have to be cut to get there, and then everyone can be like, you know what, this is, the problem is, is we have salaries and benefits going up five percent.
Yeah, I think it just, it's like kind of a clear picture of where we are in the budget and kind of the growth of what's mandatory and what's more new.
So does everyone, Tony?
Sorry, I just had a question about the reaction of the Hanover Finance Committee presentations.
Yeah, so I mean, we had members of the committee said, yep, this looks great as presented, which was above, you know, the three percent target. We had members asking, why can't we go back to the three percent? What happened to that? So I think part of this explanation might help answer that question about why we can or cannot go back to the three percent target. We had members asking very specific questions about the need for a particular new FTE or the justification for, it actually is kind of currently, it's not really even a net new, it's like it was already approved in this year, or not approved in this year's budget, but is currently on staff because we approved the hiring later as a board, right? And so it's not really a new, but why did that occur? What is it? So those are kind of general flavor of the discussion, so, you know, and the finance committee does, does not vote until we kind of finalize, and then they have their formal vote to say yay or nay. So just kind of keep that in mind as far as process. So there was, but mostly just questions about why this, and folks can disagree with me who were there.
And the tax rate in Hanover is going up for a couple of reasons that aren't our budget problem really, it's the fact that, there's two real reasons, right? One is, is that I believe there's some money last year that's not coming back from the state this year. And then the other reason is the mix of students, even though we've smoothed the curve with the whole Hanover-Norwich thing, there are more Hanover students, I believe now, so that's causing the numbers to go a little bit unfavorable as well. So it's more than just this base budget increase. And so I think they, they got that, right? They clearly, a couple of the members were very clear on that underlying issue.
So does everyone support?
Jamie, is your answer?
Go ahead, Jamie. So does everyone support what Kim is proposing? Head nod. Moving on to election location. Chris, you good?
That's kind of me. I think that principals are more than welcome to join the conversation. We have been talking, I guess, year after year about the difficulty of hosting our elections in this building at the same time students are in session. And it's, it's very difficult to keep student populations separate from the voters who are coming in. And Julie, you want to just kind of elaborate on it?
So we met with the town, Jamie, a few of us met with the town. In this building, it's really hard to separate the voters from the students because there's classes on this end of the school. There's a way that we could do it by turning the voting, which the town was a little bit reticent to do, you know, they felt like it was too last minute, and have everyone park in the back and come into the gym and out the locker room hallway. But I said that I felt like if we wanted to really take safety seriously, we, if it stayed here, we needed to do that. And so hopefully they've heard that loud and clear. But, you know, in talking with Tim, the Richmond School would be a much better place to vote because there's a way of shutting off the whole school from the voting that's happening. And I think with open carry laws, as well as, you know, we lock the building during the school day, we buzz people in and out, even to have students who maybe went here once and we don't want to enter the building without us knowing that they're here, to have the building wide open, in this case, three times a year, seems like it's not taking safety seriously enough for our students. And I think shutting down for three days a year, if we have a better option, why aren't we using it? And I feel like the town needs to hear that. I said it really clearly, I'm hoping that everyone is supportive of that and that we can get it moved. I think the biggest worry for them was voter confusion. If we move the vote or park in the back of the building and come in the back door, might confuse the voters. I think we have a pretty intelligent voting population that with advertisement and signage could figure it out. So I think that's a small problem, voter confusion, student safety.
Has anyone looked at the parking of Richmond School?
Nothing like that, but-
I mean, we haven't necessarily because we're, there is the possibility, March might be an issue. There's always the possibility of parking on the field.
During mud season?
Traffic, yeah. Yeah, each Hanover person might probably be that happy with it.
Yep.
Yeah, parking would be an issue. There are other cutouts along line road, which can put probably, depending on, I haven't, I don't vote in Hanover, so I haven't been here to vote for quite a long time, to see what the, like the peak number of cars would be.
Didn't you do the COVID, you do the COVID booster clinic there?
Yep.
And I think far more people got the COVID booster than actually the way at the Hanover. So seemed to work for parking then.
So we can, after three o'clock, that all of the, I mean, certainly that's not going to be a problem in the afternoons because we could clear our cars out of there. We definitely would have to talk to, maybe I'll start with printing, they don't like it when we use their parking lot. But I think if we talk to the town, there is, if we had a crossing guard, there's significant space down on Old River Crest as well, along line road, along Dresden Road. Traffic would certainly be an issue, but I'm sure it's an issue here as well.
Yep. I know that there was at least one presidential election held at the Richmond School in the gym, and it was probably-
Was it in the-
No.
That was in this, that was in this range.
No, 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 no. It was in the new school. It was not Ike. I'm assuming it was during the renovation of the high school.
Cars back then, yeah.
Because I remember it was used, and so that would have been a pretty heavy turnout. But my question is really, what, what about using the Black Center across the street?
That was Jamie.
It's not big enough? I could tell. It's not big enough?
Jake?
I just have a couple of thoughts. I think there's a possibility, maybe we could shuttle, have teachers park somewhere and shuttle them that day. The other thing that I like about this idea is the proximity of the police department for helping with traffic, but also, one of the things we've been concerned about is the fact that, I feel like it's, I don't want to necessarily say inevitable, but I think that some of the, some of the folks who are Second Amendment enthusiasts who are looking for a way to demonstrate their rights, I think inevitably are going to show up. And I would much prefer that proximity to HPD for what I consider to be that eventuality.
I just was wondering, can we talk to Crell and HPD about having the teachers park in their parking lots for the day? I don't know. I mean, there's parking lots right across the street.
Crell was classified spaces, so you're not going to get through there.
You can't get in there? Okay. Not even with lovely teachers who are fingerprinted by everyone?
Well, actually, the Proudies-
Oh, the front lot?
The Proudies use-
Yeah, the Proudies use.
Are you guys talking about inside the fence line?
Yeah, no, no, just-
You know, outside the fence, I mean, we-
No, this is inside the fence line. The Proudies uses that whole parking lot. Sorry.
Yeah, I just was wondering, it just might be able to, like, instead of shuttling the teachers, just move them across the street and then let the public park in the RMS lot and vote.
Or guarantee.
So I guess, can I, why is it our problem? I don't understand why this is Dresden trying to solve the town's problem. Why, why isn't the town looking for solutions such as talking to Dartmouth College, who has a lot of space downtown? Why are we trying to, just why are we trying to solve it?
Oh, yeah. Thompson Arena.
Jamie, did you-
You have, we have three different people wanting to comment on this.
I think that, oh, sorry.
Just walk up and start talking.
I know, I have that problem. So they, they are, people are asking Dartmouth students would like it to be in Leveron, you know, because I think some actually got bussed here to vote. So I think they want it closer to them, and they're trying, and I think the town's trying to talk to Dartmouth about that, but I don't know if they're getting anywhere with that. I don't, I don't have an answer to why it's our problem, except that one of the votes is ours.
Right.
The March, yeah, in the March, but not, not the primaries and the general elections. Ben?
Tim, I was wondering, so as soon as you said, let's go to the middle school, it's safer, I was like, those children are younger, that makes no sense to me at all, it seems worse. Can you walk me through architecturally, why, why is there an advantage to the middle school?
Because the gym in the middle school is-
Sorry.
Outdoor?
The gym in the middle school can be locked so that you can't access the school building from the gym. And they have an indoor and an outdoor in the gym, so you can just go in, vote in the gym and come out and never actually come and contact with any of the building inside at all. Now, would you be walking up towards the, relatively close to the front door of the school? Yes, but you don't, I mean, here you have people walking through school hallways to get to the gym. That doesn't happen. It's basically, it's, it can be set up so it's its own separate entity that really has no access to the building whatsoever.
And a follow-up question, for the people who are working there all day, which I assume would be probably dozens, or at least a dozen, they'd have to go into the school for things like bathroom breaks and whatnot.
Right.
So I would imagine those doors would probably still be unlocked in a safety sense.
There's a-
Do they have to make them walk around?
They either would come around and we'd let them in, or there would, we could, there's a bathroom, but it's in the hallway.
Those bathrooms are part of the lock here.
Well, except then-
That doorway locks, so the hallway.
Yeah, but the, we need to get to the cafe.
Oh, cafe?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you won't be able to get-
Correct.
But the bathroom-
My issue would, they'd just come out and walk around and we'd let them in.
Okay. We have three people online who wish to talk as well, including Paducci, who's on the board.
Paducci, go ahead first. Thank you. Is there someone else?
Here's a member of the public name Carol who wishes to speak.
Carol, can we move Carol over to the panel? Yes, we can. If you can just give us your name and where you live, or your town you're from. Yes, we can. If you can just give us your name and where you live or your, what town you're from. Thank you, Carol. So what are the next steps? And Ben?
You also have Kelly McConnell calling in.
She had coffee to go.
Kelly?
Yes.
Thank you. Kim?
So I guess one little tidbit and one question. So I actually heard at the Hanover Select Board meeting, the Select Board was congratulating how many volunteers participated in the last election. And so, so to answer that, is it a dozen that would need to use the restroom? I think there were something like 70 volunteers that helped with the election. So just to kind of give you a scale of, of the help. And then the other is, well, I guess my second point is, we still have traditional town meeting for the town side. So I guess the question is what, if anything, would be changed with that or we'd still have it at the high school or not? And then, yeah, I guess the third, I, I feel like we're not having a great collaborative discussion because I feel like, I mean, it's great that Carol, you know, kind of called in. But I know that there are, you know, supervisors of the checklist and our Hanover Town Clerk and others who probably have more information. And I just was maybe hoping if we could, and I don't, maybe this has already happened where people have been talking, but I just want to make sure we're, if we do decide that we want to change locations, that we have enough people in the discussion to make that decision. So I would encourage maybe some.
So who makes the decision though? Isn't this the town of Hanover makes the decision? Or do we make our decision for our own school board to let, uh, votes?
Jamie?
Yeah, Jamie has her first.
Jamie? Again, is it a school board decision though? Okay. Yeah? Tony?
What, during COVID, when they used Lead, how, who made that decision? Does anyone know?
Deb?
Well, my understanding is that because there were no athletic events happening at Dartmouth, it was an empty unused space. So it wasn't an issue. And because of distancing, it offered the capacity to spread out all the election booths, but it's not likely that that would be the case post-COVID.
But, but who made that, how was that decision made? Were moving it from the high school to Lead? Who said it's going to be here?
The, well, so. Well, no, so, so to answer the question, so it was the Town Clerk, Betsy McLean, in her dual role as Finance Director slash Town Clerk. It was a big issue to try to find where to house with significant distancing and whatnot. And so that's what they were able to work out.
Like we're a public health officer being really involved.
Yeah, so, but it was the town and the Select Board and it was presented to the Select Board as an option.
Neil. So I, I too am thinking the same thing that you're thinking, Rick, right? And I'm trying to figure out, so I agree with Tony, like, I mean, one approach could be that the school board could vote that we no longer want to host, post-voting. I think a more appropriate step forward might be, and I hate to even mention this, right, is to form a subcommittee. Right? Because I, I think that there's, there, there is a, a level of collaboration here that is necessary, right? And to the extent that the school board is the body that owns the election for the school budget, I think makes sense for that body to be the one involved with whatever town body is necessary than to determine or, or talk through the bigger picture issues of, of multiple elections and where to host them. And I think to do that in, in a collaborative rather than, you know, the board simply saying, we no longer are going to host these, you figure it out, town, I think is not the right way to approach this. I think that it does need to be a conversation. But by forming a committee that ensures that those conversations happen in a duly-worn public meeting, if they call a public meeting law, and that all of those conversations are transparent and open.
fuel?
So I'm just hoping, whatever, so I've been trying to start this conversation for a few years. We had a conversation with the town people who make these decisions. A change seems like people are resistant to. And I, as the person who's in charge of, ultimately in charge of the safety of this building and these kids, I, I do not want the vote here unless they turn it. And that even seemed to be an issue, turning it 25 degrees, right? So turn it 25 degrees and don't have people walking through the same hallway or move it off this campus. Like, it feels like one of those, like, I'll lie down on the tracks and say, if that can't happen, it should not be here. We completely are turning our heads on those two days, the ones we've just had, and kind of been like, whatever, we just hope nothing will happen. When, you know, I have to write to the state, like, what are we doing for safety protocols for everything? How do we buzz people in? We don't leave our doors wide open any other day. And then that day, we just sort of walk away going, hope, hope it'll be great. And that just feels like we shouldn't do that. It, it just, I mean, I'm responsible for these 700 kids in this building. We can't keep doing that. So who, whatever pressure, like, I don't think I'm the one that's able to lie down the tracks apparently because I sort of tried, you know? But for someone to say, yeah, turn it 25 degrees and everyone parks in the back, or we go to Richmond, or it's not here. Some version of that is what I prefer, but I'm not in charge of this piece of it. But I, I feel irresponsible. It's like I almost want to call in sick on those two days. So I don't have to deal with whatever happens.
Eric?
So the turning it solution, I don't really feel like we've talked too much about that. Or maybe we have.
Well, but I don't know if we need to be talking about it tonight.
Well, no, no, but what, but we, okay, but it seems like the turn it solution is actually a very easy outcome here versus taking it over to the middle school because the turn, my question is, does the turn it solution solve the problem?
It's, it's a better, sorry. It solves it in terms of the, right, people, right, so that the only people that come across the hall would be the election workers and you could post a police officer right there. And then nobody enters our hallways and can get confused as a college student versus a high school student versus, right? All that confusion during the day just would be fine because somebody would come out and the police officers say, you're voting, your exit is there.
That's why, you know, I just wanted to hear Julie's.
Yeah.
Say that just because, I mean, I agree with you, we could form a committee, but then the day of the, the election is in March, like, it's now Christmas, almost the holidays, like, you know, if there is a viable, workable solution, and Julie's like, you know what, that's like 90% of the solution. It may not be 100%, but it does sound like that is the easy button on this one as far as versus moving it. It sounds like moving it to the middle school does create a hole between the parking and this and like, and these other issues that came up. If this is, if there is an easy way out on this and we could at least tell the town, this is what we're doing, if you're going to use this building.
I would say another solution that we want to be overlooking is that a lot of districts don't have school on that day. So we could have it be a non-attendance day, we go another day into June.
Neil?
I would still advocate for the committee, right? So I mean, I think Julie's input is, is very valuable information that we're bringing in the committee. I think that there's, you've got the, a timeline and a sequence of events that one of the very first ones is the election that we actually own. Right? So I'm seeing in my mind, there's no reason why we can't change the configuration of the March election because that's an election that, that we're, we are the body that's responsible for that one. The committee can then solve these things, you know, sequentially, right? But I think that, you know, the solution to that first one might help dictate what future solutions would look like and we just need to begin that work.
We can unilaterally decide that?
For March.
For our March election, we, we, we run everything?
Yeah.
So why don't we just do that as a pilot? Deb?
Two years ago, when Marcela ran for the school board, people came into the cafeteria to vote. And one of the big issues was students were coming in the door too. But that's where the election was, I assume by fiat of this group or Julie deciding. But, you know, that's where, it's already been moved once, so.
We're in playoffs.
Playoff games.
That's right. So I think it, it would seem that we could move it to wherever we want, but we still need the voting machines, we need the ballots, we need the cooperation of the town. And it, it seems like it should be an easy fix for superintendent, for Rick, for whoever to go to the Town Clerk and say, hey, just want you to know for March, we're, we're coming in the back. This is, you know, we're going to print signs that direct voters to the appropriate, but, but, you know, for any advertising the town does or whatever, you know, the town's role in this, that we just inform them and make sure that they don't have any concerns about that.
So do I have a head nod? Can I get a head nod for me and Jay to go talk to the town manager and the clerks? That we're going to do what we just talked about, turning everything 25 degrees for the March? We'll do an assessment at the ends and convene, potentially convene a committee to talk about doing this for all other elections going forward.
I, I just would, sorry, I would want to include if you do, do a committee, someone from Dartmouth College in, in that discussion, not just the town, but the college as well, so.
Well, I don't think we would ever ask Dartmouth to do our school elections.
No, 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 but I'm saying if we're, if we're having a committee after the March for the November.
That should be a town invite. So we'll ask the town, so we'll include someone.
Point of order question, since the warrants would be able to turn Dresden hand to Hanover, wouldn't it be the SAU rather than Dresden that will handle that?
Sure, I'll go. Bye.
Or both, right? Isn't there Hanover warrant articles?
Jay, we'll walk over.
The ballots are a Dresden ballot and a Hanover ballot and a Norwich ballot. There is no SAU. The SAU, if you remember, right, the SAU budget is folded into all of the other ones. It doesn't, it's not.
It's not its own.
I don't think, I don't think it's a concern on point of order. I think Dresden, since we're using Dresden facilities, that, so Jay and I will take it.
Also, Jamie has her hand in.
Jamie? Thank you. Any other comments about this election location? Kim?
Just to clarifying, so is there an issue? Because we haven't really, we haven't heard an answer about the formal town meeting that still occurs after our March votes, right? It's what, May sometime? And so is that an issue from a safety, because that happens at night in the gym. So, I mean, it just, I'm just trying to figure out the scope of the issue. So it's just the like 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM elections. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Moving on to state fire and safety reports.
Fun stuff.
In a little facility update, I guess, prior to that. How you doing all? I'm Tony, you're the facilities director. Yeah, before I would look over, I mean, both reports came in really good. It's mostly housekeeping stuff. We'll go over those few issues if there's any questions about those. But I wanted to mention that our facility assessment is happening here at the high school and at Richmond in December. We're going to do those, which will be on the 20th and 21st. And here will be on the, our walkthrough of the part of the assessment. And high school will be on 22nd and 23rd.
Of December?
Of December.
Wow.
Yeah. So we, we already did Marion Cross. We're using that as a, as a pilot assessment. We expect to get a report back from them shortly on that. And then we'll go through that with the folks. Maybe make some changes if we want to, but then our actually walkthrough for the assessment will be at the end of December. Probably within two or three weeks, we should get some kind of, I don't know if we'll be ready for the January meeting. Probably most likely the February meeting, we'll be able to bring some of that information to this one.
But that, those assessments are actually what are feeding Tom's, facilities committee.
Yes, exactly. Exactly. But that, there might be some stuff that we asked them for that might be red flags that come up, which we would also bring to your attention. One other thing in facility world is that the state of New Hampshire, I don't know if you guys probably heard about it, is the Get the Lead Out program. I do want to report on that for the Richmond and for the high school because they changed the requirements from 15 parts per billion down to five in New Hampshire. Vermont's always been four since we started this back in 18, I think it was when the program started. But I want to report that Richmond has, everything is under actionable levels. No, no faucets came in above five parts per billion. And here at the high school, and Richmond has 37 locations where you could possibly get a drink of water. High school has 34 and we only had one that was 5.5 parts per billion. And that was a pottery sink in the art department, which we labeled it not part of the water and actually changed the faucet. I just don't have the results back from the, from the test.
Do you think the lead is coming from the faucet itself?
A lot of times it is. It's either a shut-off valve or a faucet, but a lot of this stuff was all changed in the 2006 renovation. So it's, it's, could be just a blip or something. Like I said, Richmond was brand new in 2005. We didn't have anything right there. And all four of our schools are actually pretty, pretty good when you get down to those levels of lead in the water. All right. So that's that facility assessment. All right, so that's that facility assessment. Just want you to know, I, you know, from what I hear from talking to these engineers, they, you know, they're going to kind of classify some of the stuff as we did prior, whether it's poor, fair, or good. So I guess I want to report to you guys that I believe we're in fair shape. I would like to say good.
You're setting the expectation.
Right in the middle. No, I want to say, I'm optimistic. I think we're in good shape. But, a lot of our equipment is seventeen years old. And it's going to be interesting to see what others classify it as. But all of our, I've taken care of all the annual inspections on most of the stuff that's going to cause us any trouble, like, you know, fire alarm systems, sprinkler systems, access controls, building automation, elevators, gymnasium equipment, roofs. The inspection was completed and, you know, that was, came out pretty good. Even though we had some old roofs. The boilers, all of our handicap doors, our underground fuel tanks. All that stuff's been inspected for this year, and, and there are no red flags on any of that at the moment. Again, it'll be interesting to see, you know, whether fresh eyes on this stuff.
So I've always wondered, the outward-bound devices that are out behind the football field?
Yeah.
Who inspects all that?
It's a company called Hi5. And they're licensed in installing that type of equipment and inspecting that type of equipment.
And they come out before school year?
Yep, we do that in July. And actually, our PE department actually sets that up. I just help them out with cutting trees and getting stuff out of their way. But that happens every July. And actually, our two PE teachers are certified instructors through a company like Hi5.
Okay.
So it covers us that way. That's one of the reasons why we couldn't install a zip line at the Marion Cross School, because nobody's really certified. Nobody wants to, first of all, install a zip line for elementary school kids. Nobody's going to be certified to let them go down there. So those types of things.
Any comments or questions for Tony?
Tony, what's with the dead-end corridor issue for the high school? That one confuses me.
Well, I brought that, I talked to the chief, and that's actually a non-issue, because we don't have any dead-end corridors. I think he just...
Wrote the question.
Yeah, so that was for the high school.
Is it a confusing question?
There was a few things on there.
Number nineteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Number nineteen.
Yeah, I, I called him up on a couple of these, because there were a few that came through blank. And then that one was a fail, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. We don't actually have any dead-end corridors, so he, he just checked that one. And I think the one above it, there was no check, right? Which says, "All exit access corridors." That also passed. The one that didn't, you know, there's a fail on number sixteen, right? And that's due to, when we look at the back of this, where we have a few housekeeping issues pertaining to that. You know, stuff, obstacles, you know, instructions being in the way.
Piano. A boat blocking the ceiling.
Well, the boat, yeah, that's a, we'll talk about that. That's the vertical open, that's thirty-two. Yeah, so that's it, yeah, thirty-two and sixteen for the high school were really the issues. And then, he did write up a few more things again, which, let's see. So yes, stairwell nine is the one that's out here that goes up to the, to the music area and to the top of the auditorium. There happen to be some boxes for this, for musical stuff that was just there, being waiting to be moved into the band room, so that, that's, they're not stored there. That's, he just looked it up like that. So we take care of that. The gym hallway is the one with the obstacles, which we've been, we've been culturing our high school students to leave their bag there. And we have to change that somehow. We're, the principal and I and athletic department, we're trying to figure that out. We're thinking some kind of benches with cubbies underneath that the bags could be put in, which I think the fire department would do. Except that, luckily, those corridors are like ten feet wide and twelve feet wide, so... Because some days it's worse than others, you know? If it happens to be whatever sport is in season, our kids... And it's amazing that kids will just leave their stuff there. And not worry that it's going to be touched. But that's the way we operate in New Hampshire. Yeah, there was a bulletin board on wheels that was in a hallway. You know, clutter, you know, some of the stage stuff. We were just before a performance, and they did have some of their clutter down there. The piano that's on wheels up in the chorus room just happened to be wheeled in, like, it was a four-foot opening instead of a six-foot opening. So it's like a wheel, a piano, over a couple of feet.
Are these surprise inspections?
No, no, we, we schedule this, but I don't go around, I don't go around and do any... I mean, I'd rather, this is, to me, this is all house, this is like a, things are not falling apart.
Right.
All of our fire extinguishers were inspected and labeled, and none of the pole stations are obstructed.
Well, they're not coming back.
Most of, all of our exits were clear. But this boat hanging from the ceiling, I do need to catch up with that feature. We need to tighten that up a little bit.
Can I ask a question? This is probably insulting to ask, but I do know the Friends of Hanover is giving Jason money to have these drop-down-from-the-ceiling computer chargers. Is that going to be okie-dokie?
No, yeah, because we're going to install those in a proper way.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, no, and he did find a few ones. And I was surprised that, actually, a couple of these were really hard to find, like this one, one fifteen A. Extension cord has permanent wiring. I mean, you really have to kind of look at it and, and to know that it doesn't, it's not been installed by someone properly. And then the other one...
I was surprised.
Another extension cord going through the ceiling. Yeah, and I don't, didn't know about that one. And again, we don't pop into every room, but we kind of look in as we go by. And then if it's open and they say, "Oh, come in," we go in, and, and then we just happen to find, but I... Yeah, so I gotta, and then we did look after these, we did start looking, and most of them were professionally installed. We don't know why, like, one eighteen is missed, and someone put a cord up there. But, so yeah, that's on my, those are on my to-do list to get those straightened out. And we are in the process, through the media center here, of upgrading a lot of our sound systems and stuff like that now. So that's all part of that. Richmond was very, again, very minor for Richmond. And again, that's, this is the beauty of having a school that's only fifteen, seventeen years old. Everything's pretty much intact.
Number forty-four.
Forty-four. Oh, that was, yeah. So if you look on the back, he's got "library book cart blocking door."
He was coming up.
I fought with Mike over that. Because the library book cart is on wheels. My contention was, when the door swings closed, it would knock, it would turn out of the way. We moved it, we had a fire drill today. So I made sure that it was... It's the, the cart that they leave the books for students who have ordered, so they can...
It's literally a cart that's like this big. Orange, you can see it, it's just happened to be wheeled with a door.
With the automatic door.
Tim, I think you don't protest too much.
Yes. Mike and I go way back. I'm like, no, you're not getting this one.
And the other one was, there was some, yeah, there was, there's a fire department connection on the outside of the building, by the kitchen, and there was some pallets leaned against it, which, yeah, we know how not to put pallets to those skis. So I mean, he's, it's good. It's good that he's pointing these things out and giving me something to do and...
He's not busy otherwise.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Neil? I don't have a question, just a comment, as I sit here and mull over the absurdity of the state of New Hampshire in restricting the amount of lead that comes out of a drinking faucet, and at the same time relaxing gun laws. They would allow the delivery of lead through a firearm into the building. It is just absolutely morbid. How that done?
And again, doesn't, I don't think some of these things pertain to us in this community, because our buildings are fairly renovated and new. But I, I would imagine other parts of the state, some of the school buildings are not in this good shape as what we have, so.
Jamie? Thank you. Anything else?
I just want to say, no, we'll probably look forward to Jamie and I, probably in February, maybe, we'll have some more facility news for them.
Yeah.
We are, a couple of notes. We are continuing to work on the baseball field project and the track replacement project, which, hopefully, again, in January, we'll have, or February, we'll have more information on that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Moving on to policies. Ben?
Hi, all these are all policies we've talked about before. These are the ones that I went through the last SAE meeting without comment or amendments, except for BEDH, which is the public participation one. For that one, we were switching out the word "table" as a verb and replaced it with, was it "reserve" or recess?
Uh, reserve.
Reserve. So apart from that one, which is number six on BEDH, there were no, no changes at the SAU meeting for any of these.
Lily?
I have nitpicky grammar stuff.
Nitpicky grammar stuff is very welcome.
Do you want it now, or do it? Okay. ACE, no.
Just email it to them.
Got it.
If it is not of substance, we can change it.
If it's just like grammatic scribners errors?
Um, yes, and some misnumbering.
Thank you, Lily.
Yeah, just send it to me in writing.
So does anyone have any questions?
Sorry, can I?
Yes.
One more thing. Again, ACE, the equity policy, number three, oh, sorry, B, three, E. Did you consider adding compensation? It's identifying counteract biased practices in recruitment, retention, and hiring.
So, to remind everyone, the, the A series is, is more like aspirational policies.
Okay.
So when it comes to the specific, what practices are you trying to identify? That would be something that would come into regulatory stuff later, where it would get into sort of the regulatory stuff that the policy and equity and Jay were kind of getting into, the specifics of that in policies down the road, rather than that level of granularity at this level.
Okay.
Is what I initially said. But compensation would certainly be an aspect of recruitment and retention and hiring. It could be. I, I mean, there's, there's no reason, I don't see a reason to not add it. But I also think that its absence doesn't mean we wouldn't do it.
Okay.
It would just be an aspect of recruitment, retention, and hiring.
Kim?
So for BEDH, the public participation?
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to clarify that, because when this bill was passed to make the thirty-minute period, it was actually very confused, confusing language even amongst the legislators of the group of what the thirty minutes actually meant. So whether the board could institute a, as many boards have, like, you have three minutes, you have five minutes kind of thing. And according to our policy, we have, we have three minutes per person, which would basically thirty divided by three would have ten people' ability to speak. And, or if only one person comes, can we still have three minutes per person with that thirty? So the thirty minutes would therefore not need to be, you know, kind of taken at that moment? And it says, like, if insufficient, you know, we could keep going or basically move... I just wanted to clarify that if there, if there was any sort of clarity that was given about that thirty minutes versus three minutes. And I know some House and senators are saying you'd have to sit there for thirty minutes, no matter what. And, and I know, I, I think, I think cooler minds have prevailed on that, but I just wanted to make sure that that was very clear, that we're, we can still do the three minutes per person and the thirty minutes, you know, if needed.
Yeah.
Jay? So, so you're right, the three minutes was determined really on a First Amendment basis. It was, it was deemed in a variety of cases, the limitations that went down as far as the restricted comment to two minutes somehow were violations of First Amendment protections. And then if you went three minutes, you're okay. That's sort of where prevailing law is. And the, yeah, they, I was recently at, at the Kidder Law Conference, where they talked about both the First Amendment aspects of this and the procedural aspects at board meetings. And they agreed that if you had your, your public comment period, and only one person spoke, you could still limit to three minutes. And that you, you then had to reserve the remainder of the time. You could, you could reorder that to the end of the meeting. And if nobody showed up, fine. If a bunch of people showed up, you have twenty-seven minutes left. And they said that was fine.
And actually, if you notice, for today's meeting, Ryan kind of jumped the gun a little bit. There's actually a public comment at the end of the meeting as well, for this meeting.
And so, and I would say we, our policy is also unique. I mean, we, we have public comment ability at the end of each topic, right? So at, at the end of each agenda item, which is, you know, we recall from our lessons and learnings and teachings on public comment, right? It is this protected period where, you know, we do have, we as a board are part of the big G government to make sure we protect First Amendment rights. And so, you know, therefore, the three-minute policy would also include... But as far as timing of the thirty minutes, it gets a little wishy, right? Because we, we kind of offer these multiple public comment periods, which the spirit of the law was just to make sure that we had public comment periods. We actually had more public comment than I think normal. And so, I just, I'm still just trying to make sure, you know, we're, yeah, we're amending our policy the way it's supposed to be. And so I guess, like, do we have twenty-seven minutes at the end? Or is it, we, but we've offered it throughout the meeting, you know? So, I don't know.
So as, as it is written right now, the thirty minutes would be the sort of before and after sectors. And then additionally, for those who are looking along at number seven, we do additionally allow comments specific to a certain item after the board has done discussing that item, kind of like we did earlier tonight, actually.
And the chair has the leeway to shut down discussion.
Yeah, the chair, if you read it, the chair has a lot of discretion.
We have to, we have to afford the thirty minutes, and we also give opportunities, but we're not going to spend three hours on a topic unless it makes sense. It becomes redundant, then.
And there are several...
I just wanted to declare, because it can be confusing.
And in several of the other numbers, there are reasons that the chair could shut down discussion for a variety of reasons, if they need to.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, guys. You guys are really busy. Moving on to business requiring action.
I just want to amend one weird thing about the minutes before we go to approve.
Sure.
And there are two places under the high school principal's report where Julie's referred to as the interim principal. And I just think it must have populated, perhaps, from another document. But that needs to be changed.
Good catch.
Thank you.
Julie, you're our principal.
You really are.
So, can we get, can we get a motion to approve by consent as amended? Deb?
I move to approve items B, C, and D by consent with the approval, with the minutes amended.
And, and that one policy, BEDH?
That one, I'm sorry.
Where you had changed the word "table," because that one goes up.
Oh, 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 oh.
You want to try it again?
Yes. I move to approve items B, C, and D by consent as amended.
Lisa? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, moving on to report of the chair. We're really deep in the budget process. We've had a couple of budget meetings. The inaugural meeting for the high school, or the Dresden tuition kicked off last week. And we're having our second meeting coming up in about two weeks. And we anticipate this probably going, this ad hoc group going for a couple of months as we gather data and comment. That is all I have. Any, anyone that committee reports? Ben?
Similarly, the tuition committee, the, what we're calling the costing out committee, will be meeting on December seventh.
Your, your first meeting?
Yes, our first meeting, which is sort of the follow-up from that March intensive conversation.
Okay. Any other... Any other committee reports? Jake?
Oh, good. I'll just comment, I haven't reported lately on the athletic committee. So we have been meeting, we've only had one meeting this fall. We actually need to do another before the holidays, just so everyone's aware. I mean, it is, we did get into it a little bit when I first became chair. There's not, there is a policy on it, and the intent of the committee is to basically provide advice to the athletic director, so we have tried to keep it, you know, fairly narrow, and we determined, you know, pretty much we're going to focus on facilities, programs, and budgets. So thanks to Tim and Tony, and Tony, and Jenna McGoughlin, and Megan have been the main attendees. We just had our meeting a couple of weeks ago. What we've really narrowed it down to now is, is one, Megan's going to work through kind of a facilities needs report, so this is not the broad facilities needs, but really having her sit down and just say, listen, these are the things when I'm meeting with my coaches that we need, and kind of put a short-term and long-term plan together. As most of you may know, in the budget, I think there's like eighteen thousand dollars for uniforms, and every team has anywhere between five hundred and a couple thousand dollars for equipment. And other than that, it's salaries. So there's not a lot of, everything else comes from all of the friends of programs. So helping her kind of get through that, and I think that's going to hopefully communicate better with Tony's facilities as well, and I think Megan may, could use some help probably combining what Tony's got in the works and kind of keeping that better coordinated. I think the second thing is going to be the process of adding sports. And even today, I just learned, we have a couple of students who have looked to go to another school because we don't offer that sport, and I just learned today that I believe we actually have to get an HIA approval to enable someone to do that, which at that point then opens us up to having to provide that sport, which means that student can't do it. So it sounds completely backwards, but that might be where we're at, and then we have Title IX issues. So anyways, that's another thing we'll focus on, researching, getting deeper into images and involving that a little bit.
So the friends of hand, the friends of the sports programs, we've, you know, we've talked about this numerous times.
So the third thing we're focused on is kind of funding of these programs, and I think our goal is not to break anything. As I just said, the budgets are quite small for the school. We don't want to kind of mess up what has been a long instituted program, but I think, and again, this could take a couple of years, but putting something in place that's a little bit easier for either the less well-organized teams to participate in, or, which might just be an overall umbrella organization that those teams could then funnel into, or something where the teams could then come together, so say we want to raise money for the scoreboard. Maybe at that point, it would be the field hockey, soccer, football. Everyone could get friends of to donate it to one fund, to not just be all their individual silos. But again, very careful.
In that conversation, that data, I think, needs to be fed into Ben's total cost of the costing committee. We're trying to actually understand all these little niche groups that are very beneficial to the school, but, you know, is it fair that, you know, one team is very good at raising funds because the coach has been doing it for years and knows exactly what to do versus another coach that's newer and, or a smaller team, and they don't have the same resources?
Yeah, I expect that these two ways will connect after.
I think they will connect. I think we, having been at a few of these meetings now, I mean, I think we have to be very careful that we don't break the system, because like I said, you know, a lot of our school runs on funds that don't come from our budget, which we're already arguing about how much is going up, so. But having said that, I do think there's probably a better way to do it, that at least maybe make some equality between the teams, so people can plug into it easier versus having some other source thing. I will tell you, I'm not sure even Megan sometimes knows how much some of these other programs have, right? But they are truly independent.
Neil?
Two things. One is a slight, not exactly what Garrett brought up when he was talking about students going to other schools because we don't offer the sport. We did have several years ago some very long discussions on what we called self-funded sports at the time. So those sports that began at the school and were funded through donations from parents or other organizations, eventually then having, needed to be folded into the operating budget of the school and the process by which that would happen. So I, there might be some historical documentation in those discussions.
Was that the hockey crew?
I think it applied to a few sports, and I can't remember.
J D hockey, for sure.
Crew was the same thing.
The second thing is more practical in nature. Knowing the current state of the scoreboard on the turf field, is that in, is there any budgetary requests associated with that to be up in budget?
Tony, you know, Megan, at our last meeting, it was a little bit gray as far as whether there was some leftover budget to get that.
Oh, yeah, maybe Jamie would.
It was put in, it was put in the budget for next year.
But we took it out.
But I think Jamie, you took it out, right? And also, scoreboard.
Scoreboard in the budget, yes, no?
Scoreboard was in the budget for next year, but we took it out. And even if we could get it, isn't it six months out that we take, go somewhere?
Probably, probably only eight, twelve, thirteen.
Okay, there you go.
Sorry, sorry.
So, sorry, did I just hear Jamie say there's money in budget this year to cover the replacements?
So that was mine. Just to make this crystal clear, my understanding was, is that the scoreboard problem is going to be solved with this year's budget because of. That at least was what Megan understands, too. So if that changes, I think everyone would like to know, because if we live another year without this, it is embarrassing to be out there watching sports. Anyway, sorry for, that is the athletic committee. We haven't had tons of meetings, but it's definitely, those have been our focus and kind of what we zeroed in on as far as helping Megan.
Thank you. Any other committees? Any other?
Yeah. I was actually on the Dresden Athletic Funding Committee back in 2011, so.
Ooh, there you go.
I have, I save everything as you all know. So if you want any notes on that, I can probably just rush up the final, and just might give you some help.
Sure.
Thank you.
Trying to, Jake?
All right. Well, since our last meeting, I know I shared this with one of the other boards, but I'll share it here officially. Julie Stevenson, Jesse Ekin, and I accepted the National Blue Ribbon Schools Award on behalf of Hainerver High at a ceremony in DC at the beginning of the month. And it was a two-day program that included PD session, professional development sessions for all the educators that were there in addition to the ceremony itself. It was great because it gave us an opportunity to share with, there were over, there were nearly three hundred other school recipients there, and we got to both share and commiserate. It sounds like many of the people that we were there with were experiencing some of the same difficulties that we have been. Everything from surviving the pandemic to dealing with staff shortages were topics that a lot of these sessions centered on. The next week, Julie invited me to meet with the staff, who is currently working on NIOSC accreditation, which involves a pretty significant strategic planning and visioning portion. And we felt that the amount of input we've had from the staff in the strategic planning process to date has been less than we'd hoped for. And so we wanted to make an effort to involve more teacher voice and staff voice. And so I gave a pretty, a fairly brief overview, but then we invited each of the groups to look at the work that's been done so far. And at the high school, both CPP and coordinators reviewed it. Julie created a survey instrument for them, and then it went to departments so that a broader section of staff could, could provide that input. And then Julie and I had a chance to debrief today. I think those surveys have been up for over two weeks at this point. And so, a lot of great feedback. Some of the stuff is really pretty easy to answer. There's some concern about format and so forth, and we know it's in very rough form right now. But there were some questions about some of the content, there was some identification of things that seemed to be contradictory. And so I'll be sharing all of that with the steering committee and with the subcommittees so we can go back and just double-check, and there are even some suggestions for things we might want to add. There were a lot of positive comments. People really appreciated the alignment of the portrait of a graduate with, with the existing mission of the high school. There is a significant amount of alignment, which I guess could be predictable, but the four, the four skills that we're hoping that students leave us with were completely analogous to the, the mission statement of HHS right now. So kind of neat that might end up expanding to the entire school system. After, really what we're hoping to do next is to summarize that content, get it out for further digestion by the committees. And it's also my understanding that Tim and Nissa had a chance to meet with the RMS staff about the draft as it stands now, and then that leaves the elementary schools. So I'll be talking with the Ray School staff at, at a meeting tomorrow, just to sort of give them the same sort of broad brush description of the work that's, that's out there, and invite them as well to provide feedback. And then the missing piece that I think we really need to, to collect is feedback from our students. And, and so I think, once we have that, then we're ready to then take it out to the public for broader input. And we're hopeful that by the end of January, we can, we can accomplish that and get to, get to work on the strategy development that will operationalize the, the goals that we're, we're developing now. So that's what we've been up to on that front. I will be difficult, well, not difficult to reach, difficult to see in this area, because I think central office staff will be helping over at the Ray School, where we've got some, some, we have some coverage issues as far as administration at the, at the elementary school. And so I want to thank Robin, Rhett has helped out, and we'll be sort of rotating through to help support the Ray School for the foreseeable future.
Is there someone that's left or just?
No one's left. We have, we have a family medical situation that's, that's created a vacancy, not a vacancy, but just a need for some support.
Linda?
Yeah, I did get a chance to share with you a bit with the board. I talked with council leadership, and we won't be looking at the whole strategic plan. I think that's a pretty heavy lift for the students to look at right now, but there's plans to look at the portrait of a graduate, and they'll be doing that in committees, which is smaller groups. So we'll have some feedback to show the board.
Great. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Robin?
Okay, well, we've been doing lots of curriculum work, as you know. I met with the librarians last week, the school counselors, the world language teachers, and then next week, we have our K through 12 meeting with all of the language arts teachers, and we'll be looking at some statewide testing data and analyzing that for the past three years. We'll also be working on the high school English curriculum the following week, so that will continue. And I've been doing a lot of work recently with the title brands and trying to get funding for us for some coaching, professional development over the summer, and we have already received some for the one-day coaching, so that's continuing, and then just continue to look at those funds and see how we can utilize those if our schools. So that's it for me. Bye.
Thank you, Robin. Any comments or questions?
Thank you.
Jamie? Okay, we don't have a need for non-public tonight. So at this point, is there anyone in the public that has any comments? Seeing none, moving on. If you have any agenda items you want to add to the December agenda, let me know. It's, it's going to be pretty full with the budget discussion, so if you can hold off for January, please do. Says our next meeting is at 6:00 PM on December 20th. Is that correct?
Does the budget present a question?
Just, we're expecting a longer meeting, so we're starting earlier.
Because we took, we do the budget end.
Okay. So just mark your calendar, 6:00 PM on December 20th.
November 20th?
December 20th.
The 13th is a Norwich meeting.
Oh.
Sorry.
I don't have to know those, so I, I didn't know. I apologize.
So great. At this point, if someone would like to make a motion, do you adjourn? Ben?
Move, move to adjourn the meeting at 8:49 PM.
Second, Lisa? Neil? Torell, yes.
Tormann, yes.
Christie, yes.
Kamal, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Keeney, yes.
Nelson, yes.
Tormann, yes.
Barry, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Do we want to do a holiday get-together maybe after the?
After the 20th?
I don't know how long. Kim, this will force you to keep it short.